Last week, Barry City Council voted to alter the selection committee composition for the city's poet laureate. The new selection committee will replace individuals associated with poetry, literary, and cultural backgrounds with city's three councillors. Hi, this is Deepak and you're watching Simcoe Community Media. During the March 20th General Committee meeting at City Hall, council deliberated and voted on various items. During the meeting, the council also passed a motion to direct staff to investigate the feasibility of developing new disc golf infrastructure. The staff will also look into the feasibility of updating the Park Strategy Plan in 2025, including related costing and reporting. In the end, Mayor Alex Nuttall and Deputy Mayor Robert Thompson express gratitude for recent funding announcements from federal and provincial governments, recognizing the stops and council efforts in housing and infrastructure projects. Please follow the timestamps in the description to jump to various sections of the video.
The first one we'll start with is the report of the affordability committee dated the 27th of February, so councillor Nixon, that's over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Nuttall, through you. The meeting on February 27th was called to order by myself at 6:01, I'm pretty sure it was 6:00 on the dot, but we'll go with 6:01, that's fine. We had three members of the committee present, one absent. We also had 18 members of staff present. And the affordability committee met for the purpose of a public meeting, which started at 6:02. We started with a presentation by Daniel Branzia of Smart Centres, who advised that the purpose of the public meeting was to review an application submitted by Smart Centres on behalf of Barry Bryan Developments Limited for a zoning bylaw amendment to permit agriculture as a temporary use for lands known municipally as 15 Harvey Road. Mr Branzia discussed some slides concerning various topics. And then afterwards, Celeste Kitzmetry, senior planner of the Development Services Department, provided an update concerning the status of the application. She advised that the primary planning and land use matters are currently being reviewed by the technical review team. And Ms Kitzmetry discussed the anticipated timelines for staff, for the staff report regarding the proposed application. Councillor Harvey asked a number of questions to both Mr Branzia and city staff and received responses. There were no verbal comments or written correspondence. Our next presentation was presented by Michelle Banfield, Executive Director, Development Services, who advised that the purpose of the public meeting was to review three applications for city-initiated zoning bylaw amendments for property known municipally as 50 Worsley Street, 48 Dunn Avenue, and 29 and 35 Spurling Drive. Ms Banfield presented several slides concerning various topics. Afterwards, members of committee, members of council present, asked a number of questions of city staff and received responses. There were no verbal comments regarding 50 Worsley, 29 and 35 Worsley. But we did have residents present, Ms Irene Lowery and Mr Steve Varga, who made various comments, which were responded by staff at the time. We also received written comments regarding 50 Worsley from Tony O'Brien, and also from Sue and Steve Delay. 48 Dean, we received some written correspondence from Jeff Catalin, as well as Farhad Kowbandi. And no written correspondence was received regarding 29 and 35 Spurling. We also received the report of the Heritage Barry Committee dated January 23rd. And also, section C regarding the nine-mile portage signage was also received. This matter was recommended to General Committee for consideration of adoption at its meeting to be held tonight. Meeting was adjourned at 7:10 PM. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Nixon for the update. So consider the affordability committee meeting to be received and we'll move on to AC1, the nine-mile portage sign. It's approved on consent. We'll go to 5.2, the report of the Infrastructure and Community Investment Committee dated March 6, 2026, and Deputy Mayor Thompson is filling in for councillor Hamilton this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Nuttall. The meeting was called to order at 4:27. Myself, councillor Nagusi, and councillor Reema, and Chair Hamilton were present, along with councillor Nixon, Kangal, Corser, Harvey, and Harris, and members of staff. There was a presentation of the Barry Public Art Portfolio by Carolyn Ryan on several topics. There was a presentation from Deena Taziki-Hock from the Sandbox of their New Path Forward. And there was an amendment to the reference of our poet laureate and the development of a disc golf plan moving forward.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Thompson. I'll have the report of the Infrastructure and Community Investment to be received. Consider it received. Move to ICIC1, the amendment to the terms of reference of funding for the poet laureate program.
Hold please.
That's held by councillor Corser. Then ICIC2, development of disc golf plan.
Hold please.
That's held by councillor Harris. I find that disc golf very contentious councillor Harris. We'll now move on to the staff reports. DEV008-24, the zoning bylaw amendment application for 284, 286, Dunlop Street West, and 119 and 121 Henry Street Ward 2. That's approved on consent. We'll now move on to DEV010-24, Sure Record No Parking Anytime Investigation Ward 4. It's approved on consent. We'll go to DEV011, proposed citywide amendment to permit four units on residentially zoned lands.
Hold please.
That's held by councillor Reema. ECD002-24, delegation of authority for signing artwork agreements, loan agreements, and artist agreements for temporary works.
Hold please.
That's held by councillor Morales. LGL001-24, acquisition of road widening for pedestrian connection and future improvements to 28 Bayfield Street. That's approved on consent. And finally, WMES01-24, the Waste Management Bylaw Alignment with Waste System Changes. That too is approved on consent. We will start with councillor Corser, ICIC1, amendment to the terms of the reference of funding for the poet laureate program. Councillor Corser, the floor is yours after you put the item on the floor.
Okay, I'd like to put the item on the floor, as printed. And I have an amendment for that, to delete paragraph 1 and replace it with, oh, sorry, I'm looking at the wrong thing, to delete the following paragraph 1A, to remove the chief librarian, library CIO, a poet laureate from another community, and a municipal cultural staff person from the poet laureate selection committee, and replace them with three members of council. And I can speak to that. I'll start with, "I look around the table at my colleagues with awe and respect, but it is a rare city councillor indeed that is qualified to choose a poet laureate." And I'll allow my awful prose to speak for itself. I think that it may be best that we leave the adjudication of the poet laureate to literary and artistic professionals.
Thank you. The amendment's on the floor, are there any other comments or questions? Councillor Kangal.
Thank you, Mayor Nuttall. And I guess I know this moved, I think, from a committee conversation, and wanted to then redirect to the appropriate member of council, and I believe it might have been Deputy Mayor Robert Thompson to first speak to maybe the rationale, and then I can ask some further questions.
Thank you, through you Mayor Nuttall, to councillor Kangal. So the rationale was, we're trying to bring all our committees and selections and stuff in line. If you notice, it's the first term of council where we've actually appointed chairs and everything, so it's within, you know, council's direction. You know, if you look at the list, we would be the only elected officials of the public for the public. So, and I actually reached out when the amendment came in, I had a really quick conversation with councillor Corser, and I didn't get to have a full conversation, but I reached out to the CEO of the library just before the meeting and asked if this was something that she was, you know, passionate about and stuff. And she said it was enjoyable and understood the rationale and wasn't offended, and I just didn't want her to feel blindsided. So I had the conversation, and we do still have the current poet laureate, which is on the selection committee, but that was pretty much the rationale of the decision, and adding the compensation, and, you know, council would be able to involve the poet laureate with decision-making and stuff like that.
If I may, through you, Mayor Nuttall, through to Deputy Mayor Thompson. So it was, I didn't speak to this last time because I was thinking more about it and then looking at the presentation, and so seeing nuances between nomination committee and then selection committee. And also considering, in other areas, we've sometimes made amendments to terms of reference to add members versus take members away. So I'd almost, I guess, redirect a question to you to say, are we losing opportunity to have a more inclusive, diverse perspective of community members by removing them versus just adding a couple of members of council to the selection process?
So I, through you Mayor Nuttall, to councillor Kangal, thanks for the question. So I wouldn't look at it like that, I just, I think sometimes too, you can, you know, add too many people to a process that actually takes away from the process. So that was kind of, just to keep it more of a uniform with the rest of our selection, people would apply, and the members of council would go through it, as we do for all members of committees and, yeah, committees, sorry.
And if I may, and maybe it's not in appropriate direction to you Deputy Mayor, but maybe I'll redirect it to staff as most appropriate. So is the selection process of our poet laureate thought of as a committee like our others, or is it more of an operational process that's been led by community members? Because I didn't see that this fell into a committee like Act of Transportation, like our advisory committees that are discretionary committees. Is it appropriate through you, Mayor Nuttall, to miss Schlichter?
Schlichter, over to you.
Through you, Mayor Nuttall, to councillor Kangal. I've only been a part of the last poet laureate, it's always sort of aligned with the Barry Arts Awards in terms of that nomination process. There wasn't an arts advisory committee at that time, and the process laid out has always, has been that composition. So the rationale for its creation, I can't really speak to. This is the first time through the process, and I would say, as part of sort of this culture plan update that we're working on, we'd be looking at all programs, and we haven't looked at other compositions of how other communities do it. But that is sort of the history as I have it.
Councillor.
I appreciate that, thank you. I guess I'd almost want to defer this, because I'd love to kind of find out from those who've been involved in the current process in both nominating and selecting a poet laureate about the integrity of that process, the merit of who should be on that, whether or not it's the same individuals, and what would one to three members of council add. But I don't necessarily favor having three members of council on this particular committee, but would like to explore maybe what that current table feels is missing from perspective, or is there process by which to bring forward individuals that are nominated for our input, but not have us so involved in the selection?
Deputy Mayor.
Through you, Mayor Nuttall, to Ms Cook, Madam Clerk. A deferral motion on this, would that affect the compensation adjustment to the poet laureate moving forward?
Through you, Mayor Nuttall, to Deputy Mayor Thompson. It would certainly delay it, because if you're deferring the whole motion, you'd be delaying the compensation. You could potentially just defer paragraph 1A to a future meeting for staff to investigate if you want the compensation to go forward.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions around the table?
Sorry, I'm not sure if I still have the floor or not.
I thought you gave it up and then...
Throw a question or not? Okay. Then I guess I have another question.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Nuttall. Then I guess, to that end, I would, absolutely in support of the other amendments related to this. I would love to get some feedback before we make a change to composition around how that's going and the merits of it, and get some insight from those that feel maybe there are also other perspectives missing, or they'd like to see that compensation informed. So I would, I would like to look at maybe separating out the first paragraph and voting on them separately. And if we can do that, then I would, I'd be interested in a deferral for the first.
I think you can move a deferral motion. Deferral motions are debatable, so if you're moving a deferral motion of paragraph, the amendment to paragraph 1A is what you're actually moving deferral to. Madam Clerk, would we need to vote on the amendment to get to the main in order to splice it out, or can we just do that at this point?
I think the easiest thing, sorry Mayor Nuttall, the easiest thing would be to have councillor Corser withdraw her amendment at this time, and then the deferral, then the splitting and the deferral could be done.
Okay, councillor Corser, you're able to withdraw?
Okay, I'll draw, withdraw the amendment.
Okay, and then I think councillor Kangal, you have an amendment?
Yes, please. Well, I have an amendment to separate out the paragraph 1A and move a motion to defer for staff to get some input from the current members of that selection committee around membership and bring it back as input for consideration.
Okay, so that amendment is now on the floor. Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Through you, Mayor Nuttall. So, understanding the, the approach to this by, but I think going to the people who are on the committee for theirs, I couldn't support it in that, but I could support the deferral to staff to look at other selection committees and stuff. But if you go to somebody who's on it, they're obviously gonna, you know, agree with the compensation today, but if we went to other municipalities and other organizations on if this is the norm, or how we come up with it, I would be able to support that. So if you would take that as a friendly, I'd be okay with that. But to go to the three members that we're removing, I think I already know their answers.
I would take it as a friendly for me, I just think it would be great to have input in some scope and capacity before we make discretion to just remove individuals and replace them with three members of council.
Councillor Corser.
I just can, a question of clarity, if I could, is this, is deferral, would this deferral go back to the actual committee that chooses the poet laureate, or would this go to the arts advisory committee, or would this go to...
No, it's going to staff, it's not going to...
Okay, okay, so this isn't going to another committee to be discussed, it's going back to staff to investigate? What, okay, yep, sounds good.
Just to process clarity then, I thought we were deferring it to a future meeting, but if we're asking staff to do something, we should actually refer it to staff and not defer it.
So we'll actually defer this until staff has completed their, completed their report that they're doing in terms of the, for the arts community, all of, all of the arts master plan, et cetera. So I think that's how I'll interpret this at this point. Any other questions or comments? I got a few comments. Spear catcher committee. It's a couple of members of council, there's nominations from the public, and it's brought forward to general committee, and then it's brought forward to council, and then it's approved. I haven't, I sat on that for, I think, eight years. No one asked me what my qualifications were on whether somebody was, you know, a good enough citizen in the community to win the award, which is of highest honor in our community. Earlier on this evening, we heard a presentation from some professionals with regards to the finances of our city in terms of reserve funds and all of the, you know, the possible outcomes or could have been and the results that were found. I'm not sure how many members around this table have a finance background. I sit on the police board, you know, I don't really have any understanding of what goes on with policing. But I'm put there on behalf of the community as an elected representative, as we all are as elected representatives around this table, to make decisions. And we are a broad, diverse set of people, right? We have three immigrants to Canada, right? I'm sorry Claire, I've been leaving you out for a year and a half. Sorry, four immigrants to Canada. That's in response to being told if you're not Dutch, you're not much, okay? Yeah. We have three members of council who are women, we've got a police officer, we've got somebody who manages construction crews, we've got somebody who's, who's educated as a, as a social worker, we've got a planner, we've got lots and lots of diverse things, somebody who dealt with, with trucking and logistics, like, we have private health, not private health, but, but health represented, and I'm missing obviously others. Pardon?
Neurodiversity.
And neurodiversity, neurodiversity. So there is, like, around this table, the public believes we're a qualified set of individuals. That doesn't mean that, you know, two of us should go into a room and we should decide what the outcome is, it means that we should work with those like the poet laureate to determine what happens next. The, the origin of this, I believe was, and I can be corrected if I'm wrong, I believe it was Bruce Mayer, who is the, the original, the OG, if you will, my professor, he gave me an 86, I don't want to brag about it, but my professor. And, you know, it was something that he had actually been, been asking for, for a while as well. And at that point, we didn't have a past poet laureate, we didn't have these things, and we still found an incredible person who was a leader in the community. So while I respect the idea of those who are part of, you know, writing poetry, or, or part of the arts community making decisions, or being a librarian with lots of books on poetry in the library, I also respect the idea that everyone's been elected here by the people, for the people, and we understand our community, I hope we understand our community. And I think that Ty is, Ty the Poetess has been putting on a lot of great events, I actually heard about one today where there's 200 people there, and that's really awesome to see. And I think that she'll bring a lot of good things to the table when we select the next poet laureate in a, in a, in a few years. So council, that's my opinion, doesn't have to be everyone's, but that's my opinion, I think that we are qualified on behalf of the community to make this decision. So I will call the vote in terms of the deferral, all those in favor of deferring, and all those opposed. Okay, it fails, so it's back to the main motion. Councillor Corser, would you like to put your original one on the floor to have it? Because we withdrew before voting on it, right? So I just want to give you that opportunity to put it back if you'd like to.
I'll put it back on the floor.
Okay, councillor Corser has the amendment back on the floor. Are there any comments or questions to the amendment? Councillor Kangal.
Just to speak to it one last time, so I will support the amendment, but the context of that really is, happy to see members of council potentially join this, but I feel when we're taking away members of the public to something that is in the public interest, we're losing, we're also losing other voices that have been involved. And so would have much rather have seen we add, rather than take away members of the public. So however it goes forward, glad to see this continue, I think it's a great program. But while I know we're quite capable in a variety of very complex and diverse areas and bring good things to the table, would much rather see addition rather than subtraction on this from a membership. So I'll support the amendment.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none with regards to the amendment to move, to essentially put the individuals back on and remove three members of council, all those in favor? Three, all those opposed? Okay, it's defeated on the main motion, are there any comments or questions with regards to the main motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And it carries. We'll now move on to ICIC2, the contentious disc golf plan.
Is it contentious? I apologize for any role in that, Mayor Nuttall. I'll put the item on the floor as printed, and I have, I do have an amendment, hopefully it's the final and capping on. So the amendment is simple, that staff in the parks and planning branch be directed to undertake a study to investigate the feasibility needs and costs of developing a nine-hole disc golf course on city-owned land adjacent to park place that includes public and disc golf consultation with a report back on the results of investigation to Infrastructure and Community Investment Committee by October 2024. And I can speak to that.
Floor is yours.
Thank you. So, yeah, just to give a little bit of context, you know, this, interest in this property dates back for me to 2019 when we had our award improvement fund, so I'd walked that area with staff, with the idea of possibly doing something to make it more active and more used. It's, you know, it's a very underutilized piece of property, and as I knew at the time, had no real plan for it, so it wasn't like it was, existing plans were being interrupted or, or bothered. So at the time, what I had in mind and what we were able to do, really didn't, couldn't be done, so I kind of left it and I came back to it. In this term, having met with some individuals in disc golf community recognizing how popular the sport is, how accessible the sport is, both for individual ability and age and finance, I came back to this space, hey, maybe this is an opportune space to do a community project fund. So although it's not stated, my community project for Ward 8, it's because we need to find out some details around the availability of, pardon me, the costs associated with doing this and logistics. So that's why it's not noted, and the date on this allows time for that information to be provided such that we could actually use the community funds to support the nine-hole disc golf course. So that's why it's done in this way, so replace the current paragraph one with this paragraph. So, I don't know if you have any questions, or if that was clear enough, but hopefully, I'm happy to get any questions, if you have questions.
Thank you councillor Harris, thanks for putting that on the floor, and no, it's not contentious, I was just kidding around. So any other questions or comments? I see Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Nuttall. I will be supporting this amendment, I know the work that councillor Harris has done, and councillor Harris and I golf, regular golf together, and I think the reason why he's pushing disc golf, he's probably a better disc golfer than a regular golfer, so he's looking for that angle on me. But, yeah, I know that councillor Harris has met with all parties involved of that property with staff, Mr Bradley and stuff, and lots of back and forth emails. So I think by removing this, it actually speeds up the process and not getting it bogged down in the whole master plan of our parks and disc golf and sports fields, so I will be supporting it.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Any other questions or comments from members of council? Councillor Harris, this might be the only sport I'm allowed to play after I get this footwork in again, so thanks for expanding it. All those in favor of the amendment? It's approved on the main motion, all those, any other comments or questions? I'm almost perfect. All those in favor? And it carries. We're now going to go on to ECD002-24, the delegation authority, and that was held by councillor Morales.
Do I have to? I'm kidding. Thank you, Mayor Nuttall, I'll put it on the floor as printed. The reason I held this item, I just have, first I just have a question of clarity from Ms Schlichter, I believe it's from Ms Schlichter, I have to ask the question too. So Ms Schlichter, my understanding from this, this would delegate authority for rotunda, sorry, related to the learning of artwork from, from the city of Barry artists contracted to exhibit on the first floor. The second portion, I just want to clarify, it says for the creation of artistic works as part of a temporary public art exhibition. as part of a temporary public art exhibition," and the definition of temporary is up to five years. Is that correct?
Through you, Mayor Nettle, to Counselor Morales, that is correct. Yes.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you, Mayor Nettle. I know it was a long night, and I'm going to be very quiet in the next couple of meetings just to kind of, you know, I only have so much water in my glass, members of council, so I appreciate your patience. On this one, though, the last, some of the last words you said before we got into the ADU discussion, if I could just replay that tape back, I'm not asking you to do it, but if I could, I would just play what you said about, "We are members of council. We are elected," et cetera, you know? This is how I find this. It's not a big deal. I don't want to make this a half an hour thing, but I just think of the soapbox. I am not saying I know more art than people who are trained, who have life experience, who have been in the trenches on that. But a line that you've said before, and I might get it wrong, so please call me out if I do, "When staff make a decision, we own it." And so, with something like this, I'm not saying that we should be intrusive into decisions with this, but I know that the soapbox was a real issue. And I think that if we just allow the process to happen, it goes to the committee. Staff look into it. They take their time. They do a report. And then it works its way up to us. We are kind of that last fail-safe for potentially, for potential art installations under five years, that I think we should just preserve that. So, I just wanted to put it on the floor to make that point. I don't know if any other members maybe share that perspective. I don't want to piecemeal different thoughts you've had in the past and present it that that is your stance, Mayor Nettle, because you haven't said that it was. But I think maybe allowing the first portion of Section 2, which is delegating authority for loaned artwork and exhibition, but retaining as a council, the creation of artistic works as part of a temporary public art exhibition, I think that might be prudent. So, for those reading, it's page one of the staff report, Section 2. Or, I guess, sorry, section, sorry, recommended motion, but it's repeated again in Section 2.
Just, if I can follow up, would it come to council based on the?
Through you, Mayor, or to you, Mayor Nettle, my apologies. What's happened, the way the public art policy is written, we, the Public Art Committee and staff in Economic and Creative Development have the ability to support and approve those temporary installations. And how we've typically operated, because it's been things like brightening barriers, so it's there for the summer period. But what we're finding is we're getting into more projects as it relates to the traffic cabinets. So, they're having a little bit of a longer lifespan. And when we look at the agreement, so when we put forward for artists, they agree to license their work to us. It's very much a one-way acknowledgement. Because the city wants to retain rights related to being able to take it down, should it get damaged, some of those pieces, having an agreement where both parties are signatory just provides better protection for both the city and the other party. So, as it stands, for us to be able to get those agreements, we would need to come to council every time, and we think that is the more prudent way to go. So, what we are asking for is in alignment with the policy. We would need the delegated authority to make it a two-way agreement as opposed to the artist right now just giving us a one-way release.
Okay. So, the delegated authority by council to staff in order, and is there then a communication that goes to council in any, in any way on that?
Through, to you, Mayor Nettle. We typically give you regular updates when we've done a brightening barriers program. Here's the installation. Here's the artists. Here's what they look like. We've done that for pretty much all of our temporary art programs, so we could continue in that manner.
That be before or after it's signed?
That would typically be after in this case. If there's a desire to do that before, then we would need to change the, amend the policy accordingly and come forward in that way.
And there lies the point. I'm not trying to be intrusive. And again, I respect people who are qualified at this, but I want to find a happy medium between what's written and, yeah.
Counselor Corser.
Just to get some more clarity on this, through you, Mayor Nettle, to Ms. Schlichter. Ms. Schlichter, would that mean that, I might be way off base here, but does that mean that every cabinet that comes up for public art would come to council, general committee, da-da-da, go through the whole process to have one single cabinet approve to be done?
Sorry, just to confirm, a notice from the, from them telling us what's going to be coming does not require us to have a staff report on the agenda, the committee, then the general committee, then the city council?
Okay.
And go forth. It's a circulation list item as I, at least that's what I was anticipating when I asked the question.
Yeah, to you, Mayor Nettle. If council was looking to every time, every agreement to come forward for your authorization, yes, every cabinet, every brightening barriers, seeds to sow, some of those other pieces that are allocated under the policy, correct, they would come through to you.
Go ahead.
Okay. That would be, but as Mayor Nettle mentioned, that would be on the circulation list then for, or it would come to council?
If we required sign-off and no designated authority to do that, that's what would happen. What I was asking was actually if we can just have a communique saying, hey, this is what we plan on doing in the future. And I don't know how long the timeline is you have in advance, but, I mean, we've received, we've received many, many, many memos that have, in some cases, actually undone what council's approved on large items. I'm sure we can take a small art item and say, hey, here's what's going to be happening.
Through, to you, Mayor Nettle. We could circulate a memo indicating the selection, and we would sign an agreement, but a memo doesn't provide the opportunity for council to provide direction or authority. So, that's typically why we've done it post-selection. Because here's the outcome. Here's what we're doing. Here's when it's coming. It's more of a activity as opposed to a permission.
Right. But if it's on the circulation list, we can then refer to a committee if we deem so needed, right? I know that's why I asked before in advance of this signature taking place rather than after, like, just to, something given as a heads up. Folks, my election literature, I probably have it in my office, I'll bring it out. It actually cites the thing that Counselor Morales was saying. And every time I spoke to a counselor, they were like, look, we didn't really know about this till afterwards. And then it was $30,000 to get out of it. It was $30,000 to buy it, so we bought it. That's kind of what I understand to be true. Maybe I'm completely wrong. Am I wrong? Right? Okay. So, I don't want to be in that position. Like, I think the decisions that are made have been some great ones. I loved the public art that was out there this summer. But like, just a heads up to council, I don't think there's a lot to ask.
If I may, just to point out clarity, so through you to Ms. Schlichter. This is more administrative because everything now would be brought to council if it's outside the Berry public art budget. So, the budgets approved at the beginning of the year and the art pieces that are bought, the soapboxes were a leased item for 150, a celebration that was a lease that, but on a normal basis, all the art is within the budget that's approved at budget time. And anything outside of that is already brought to council. Is that not the way it's working?
Through you, Mayor Nettle, to Deputy Mayor Thompson. That is correct. So, the soapbox was a permanent installation, and any permanent installations are required to come forward to council under the public art policy. So, anything that is of a permanent, whether it's donated, whether it's purchased, comes forward to council for approval. Temporary pieces are more projects related to brightening barriers, to the traffic cabinets, potentially murals when they're on city, things that the community bring forward, council projects for your beautification, seeds to sow, which you've approved, that we brought forward. There's a budget assigned to it. So, everything is within the scope of the budget, the policy. There is nothing outside of that. So, really, coming forward to, with, to council is process-driven in the sense of it's more approving the artwork itself of a temporary nature than a budget for it because the budget would already be there.
Maybe just to follow up, if you don't mind.
Deputy Mayor, do you sit on that committee?
Yes, I do.
Who else sits on that committee? Counselor Corser.
And I will say, and Stephanie can, or Ms. Schlichter, sorry, can attest, there was some challenges with the Berry Public Art Committee and policy and when it was moved or the, I guess, promotion, and Stephanie took it over to her, Ms. Schlichter took it over. That was one of the first things that was changed in the governance and procedure and policy to not have, I, like, the soapboxes, I know in your literature, but there was a whole thing to it. And actually, if you know public art, it's done exactly what it's supposed to. Everybody talks about them, so that's the purpose behind art. But what I'm saying is, there was some policies that probably weren't being followed and stuff, which I would say within the last three years or so, it has changed, where that's why I think this is just administrative, so.
So, if we get in hot water, it's you two that are on the line, not me.
Big shoulders.
Big shoulders.
I'll take that on.
Okay. Any other questions or, yeah, Counselor Morales?
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. I just want to clarify one quick. My intent is definitely not to hold up the traffic cabinets. Ms. Schlichter will confirm this. I've bugged her way too much the last year about trying to get some graffiti abatement. Temporary art installations, as the report says, is up to five years. Five years is key. So, I, everything she said in the report is factual. Five years can be a significant mural, can be significant infrastructure. It could be another art installation, right? Like, we have Thinking Man, I believe, for over a decade, definitely over a decade, and the squares, that's, I forget what the time period is for that. But it falls into that gray area where I hate that I'm tying up traffic and the bright spot Berry stuff, but I also want to keep a bit of that. Absolutely trust our council representatives on that. But this is the kind of stuff that we don't want to make breakfast television again. We don't want to have to have that discussion. So, maybe if we, let me ask Ms. Schlichter a question. Is there anything in the existing policy, which is that it gets, comes to council and we rubber stamp it, which we have, to my understanding, we've rubber stamped it, and that's not a derogative term, we've approved everything other than the sandbox thing, which I held and we had a discussion about. But is there, is there really an issue right now that needs to be fixed? Maybe the timing of the artist's RFPs for some of the art. But beyond that, is there some, is there a specific issue that this, as written, is trying to address?
Through you, Mayor Nettle, to Counselor Morales. We're actually, the intent of this report is to tighten up some of the governance in the sense that we've had one-way acknowledgements with artists, and again, for relatively smaller pieces, shorter periods of time. It's more from that governance piece that we brought it forward, that we believe we should be entering into two-way agreements where both parties sign, just because of the commitments and, to your point, some of that duration. So, certainly, there, it is something that council could review in terms of how we come forward, but that was the intent, is to more from a governance perspective, tighten up the program.
Ms. Schlichter, is there any way, any language on the spot, and I hate to put you on the spot, that you would recommend that would make it distinct that, yes, we go with the recommended motion for things such as bright spot, traffic abatement, other more temporary things in nature, but it wouldn't necessarily apply to public art, murals and other more permanent infrastructure? Is there any language? I, that might be unfair to ask you at 9:45 on the spot, but I think that there's some interest to at least have the discussion. I don't know if it would actually go forward.
Through you, Mayor Nettle, to Counselor Morales. There could be some language that either identified program specifically a duration of time, so you could change the duration of the temporary art and its installation time period for which it would need to come forward.
I think, I will let other members speak, but I think maybe just switching that five years to somewhere between two and three might achieve that. Mayor Nettle?
Counselor.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. I'm very hesitant to support this, regardless of what our issue that may have come to light in the last term of council. We have committees for a reason and to boot. When we've got a committee that has two members of our council on it, if anything were to go sideways, we know exactly where to point the finger, and we've got nobody but our own to blame. But to put an extra layer into everything and have it to come around this table, look at how much time we've just been spending talking about this. I wouldn't even want to add up how much time we talked about those soapbox things the last time. I just don't thi, I think we've got bigger and better things around this table to be talking about. And also, too, I'm no art expert. Apparently Deputy Mayor Thompson has become one. And we already know Counselor Corser's, she's there, yep. I think let's leave it with the experts and the other committee members that are around the table to make those decisions. And I just don't think we need to be micromanaging to that degree around this table. But those are just my comments, a one-off. I think this is a bit of a knee-jerk kind of reaction to that one-off.
Any other questions or comments? I think our two counselors have received the message, so.
A one-off to committee.
Nope. Oh, you've been drawing over there. That's fantastic. Okay. We'll call the vote on the matter. All those in favor?
There was no official amendment.
I don't believe there's amendment. No. Yep. All those in favor of the main motion? It carries. And I believe that's, we are through our business for the evening, except for our inquiries and our announcements. So, I'm going to start with inquiries. Deputy Mayor Thompson.
I have an announcement inquiry.
Any inquiries for members of committee? Seeing none, we're going to go to announcements. You're back up.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. I'll start off with my inquiry to my, Mr. Miller. Oh, sorry, through you, Mayor Nettle. Could you tell me the last time the City of Berry received a substantial amount of money from the federal and provincial government? Like, so my memory serves me, it was 2009, which was stimulus money that helped with Lantman Lane, maybe a little bit of the Holly and Fire Station 1, if that, is that my memory? Would that be correct?
Well, through you, Mayor Nettle, Deputy Mayor Thompson. I might have to ask the historian on staff to confirm, but I believe you are correct. I think the five points there might have been.
Mr. Miller, you better just say that's because of the knowledge.
So, Ms. McAlpine?
Mayor Nettle, through you, to Deputy Mayor Thompson. I believe that was the last time. I am ancient, but not entirely decrepit.
And maybe just to follow up, if, like I said, I wasn't on council, but watched and stuff, just shy of 10 million, like 9.2 or something?
I, I don't have the number off the top of my head, but I believe it's 9.3 or 9.6, one of those.
Okay. So, here's more of my comment. And I'm really sorry, Mayor Nettle, if you have something on your announcements and stuff, but we had a really good week last week. And, you know, it's, we set direction, but staff do the work. Like, it's, you know, it's from, like, we have a vision, you know, through the leadership of the mayor, a vision of plan, and we, you know, we implement it, but it's through staff. Like, you know, we're getting houses built. We've got procedures. And I think it's the hard work of everybody around here. And, you know, I said it in my inaugural speech, that you learn really quick that this is a team sport. And, you know, so I'll start with CIO Prouse, who's in his office virtually, but, you know, it starts there and, you know, it goes to our planning. planning, engineering, communication, and it's that, you know, that allow this. And, you know, there's a lot of people on council and in the public that don't know how hard Mayor Nuttall has worked for this, you know, driving to watch the minister speak, cornering them, you know, and literally explaining why it's great to come to Bury and do because of all the work we're doing. And I just, you know, it was great as a counselor, as the deputy mayor, or just as a resident to, you know, we were in the national news for lots of good reasons last week. And like I said, so kudos to staff and my fellow colleagues. There's a lot of hard decisions and a lot of hard work, so that's, I don't know if that's an announcement or pumping tires.
We always accept pumping tires as announcements. Any other announcements around the table? Counsel Congle.
Excited to vote. Voting for your Bury bird. We have almost 2,500 votes. Let's go Nuthatch, right, Deputy Mayor Thompson, which is third place at this time. But very pleased to see this is something that's actually creating a nice stern interest. My compliments to the City of Bury Bird team, which are also a complement of broader individuals and just those with nature, Bury, and they've been engaging schools. So I believe it's two schools today and hopefully more to come that are actually using this as an opportunity to engage students around researching the birds, getting involved in the importance of supporting our bird species and migratory habits, and actually then choosing a bird. So excited to be unveiling this around May 11th, around World Migratory Bird Day, but I was remiss last time in announcing this to not have mentioned the incredible work and partnership that our City of Bury communications team does on this project. And so they've been amazing champions to be able to support this initiative and a community group that has brought this forward. And so to Rebecca and your full team, thank you for working with that community group and establishing the poll and making sure that we have an ability to actually reach out to multiple residents. So please vote for your City of Bury bird on buildingbury.ca, and you can cast your vote up until March 31st. My second and last comment really is a bit of a celebration, so I did want to take a moment because in Ward Three at our East Bayfield Kinney Centre, the green rink is home to our Bury junior sharks. And so there was a lot of celebration over the weekend. So on Sunday, they hosted their last pre-game of the season, but also did celebrate some significant milestones. So the junior sharks' players and staff had the best-ever regular season finish, and with the final regular season, they had a record of 25, 16, and two, and a seventh-place finish overall. So congratulations to that team. They're looking to make some waves at the OWHL U22 Elite League Playoffs in Toronto on April 5th to 7th. I did also want to say thank you to those Sharks. So Counsel Corser and I were able to sponsor a table at the International Women's Luncheon and had the chance to sit down with members of our ladies, the Sharks and their coaches. And on the weekend, they were celebrating a lot of graduating athletes, and we were able to actually speak to three that are going on, a minimum, those at the table represented three Sharks, and all three, I believe, were going to the States on scholarship. So leading on and off the ice in many ways, but to the whole program happening, we've got a very strong and dedicated system between sponsors, to supporters, to families, to players, and to staff in facilities. So thank you for everyone to make that happen.
Thank you, Counsel Corser and Counsel Nixon. Counsel Congle and Counsel Nixon. I haven't been around for a while, I'm mixing up names now. Counsel Nixon.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Nuttall. Yeah, first of all, Friday, April 5th, the 18th Annual Battle of the Bands will be held at The Ranch 2.0. Has it always been Ranch 2.0? Has it just been the Ranch?
It has been.
It is now, it's changed. Who knew? So anyways, this is put on by the Kepenfelt Rotary Club, and at their 18th year so far, they've raised over $655,000. Hundred percent of the proceeds going to local charities and projects. So, yeah, Friday, April 5th, 7:00 p.m., The Ranch 2.0. And also, this is not necessarily an announcement, but I got the mic, so I just wanted to just mention briefly, and we talked earlier about the sign that will, I guess, come for a third reading next week regarding Nine Mile Portage, and I just wanted to just get it on the record, and I wanted to thank two people. One is a Ward Four resident, Dieter Mueller, who has been very instrumental over the last several years. He's kind of a local historian, he's got a big thing for that sign, and he should, because it's probably the most historic site in the city, goes back to like the 1600s. And so I just want to thank him for all his efforts, and I just want to thank Counsel Reutman for putting the motion forward a few weeks ago. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Any other questions or comments, or sorry, any other announcements? Seeing none. Couple things, first of all, anyone who's educated on birds knows the white-breasted nuthatch is the way to go. If you're uneducated, there's five other choices, but if you're educated, that's the only one. With regards to, I don't think the mayor's ever campaigned for an online poll before, I'm just going to throw that out there. I might be interfering in some, something I shouldn't. Secondly, with regards to overnight on-street parking restrictions, they're in place until the 31st of this month, and it's prohibited between 3:00 and 6:00 a.m. within the downtown business improvement area, and on other streets between 12:01 and 7:00 a.m. If you have need for more information on that, it's bury.ca/snow to grab that information, but it is in place until the end of the month. And if you want a reason why, look outside today, and you will find it. Finally, on the, what the deputy mayor already alluded to with regards to the money coming from the federal and provincial governments, and quite frankly, more information we received today with our investments, but let's start on last week. I think it's pretty neat when we're being recognized by both the Conservatives and Liberals as a place that's getting it done on housing. Like, that is really, really cool. If you go and do your research, you might not find another place in Ontario that that has happened. I think it speaks to the job that's been done by our public servants. It speaks to the political will around the table to continue, as we even heard tonight. And I just want to say thank you to our public servants and our council for making that happen. We have become an attractive place to invest, not just for the private sector, but also for government. And the stability as a city, whether it's inside of our public servants or if it's inside of this council, the stability that we have portrayed and the wisdom in how we've conducted ourselves goes a long way towards that. And it takes 11 people rowing in the same direction to get it done. So I really do want to say thank you so much to each of you, and we should take it, we should take it as recognition when both governments are stepping up to the plate with the City of Bury. Secondly, on that item, you know, if there's ideas that you see or hear, and if you're in the community and you have ideas that perhaps didn't get encompassed inside of the, you know, the affordability plan, or you've seen something work somewhere else that we're not instituting here on housing, please reach out, because we just received a very large amount of money between the provincial and federal governments. I think if we continue with the pace that we've been operating, my guess is we're going to be in the neighborhood of about $20 million plus 26, somewhere in the neighborhood of 40 and 60 million dollars coming from other levels of government if we meet our targets. Those are huge numbers, huge numbers. And believe it or not, we're looking for the best ways to invest that in producing the most amount of housing for the need that exists here in Bury. And so please bring forth the ideas. It is not in vain. We finally have some gas in the tank, and we can finally make an impact, I believe, if we use those dollars wisely. And so please do reach out. The final piece of that I want to leave with you is that staff are going to be doing some work for members of council. I want the same to ring true for you. I know Counsel Corser, you've talked about co-op consistently. My expectation for members of council is to find what you believe works and bring it forth. It doesn't mean it's going to be adopted. We've got to make those choices. Staff have to come back with those reports. But get in now with the requests, because coming at the final hour or in the council meeting, we know how that always ends up. It always ends up getting submarine. So it's better to have that impact now, get those ideas in now if you haven't had them before, because I think that you'll be able to actually see some real benefit through that. I'm creating a whole lot of work for our team by saying that, but I think it's really important that everybody buys into this part of the process. And finally, finally, a point from earlier that I just wanted to stress about North Bury. If we have our way and there's a boundary change, there's bound to be a few properties that are going to be residential in nature, and they can have the same setbacks as the annexation lands in the south, and we would have both the north and the south part of the city living with the same conditions. Circulation list, March 13th. Are there any items on the circulation list? Seeing none, go to March 20th. Counsel Reutman?
Yes. Item C6 is a letter from the town of Colberg, and it has to do with the historic, listing of historic houses, and a request that it, that is going to terminate next year, and a request to extend it. And I would like to refer that to Affordability Committee so that we can deal with it there, because Heritage Bury reports into Affordability Committee.
There's a referral motion to affordability with regards to C6, I believe, on the circulation list for March 20th. All those in favor? Carries. That's referred. Any other items on that agenda or on that circulation list? Seeing none. Oh, sorry, Counsel Harvey, I almost missed you there.
Yeah, no, actually, I was trying to find it. It's the one that you and I spoke about the other day. C7, correspondence from the town of Aurora in regards to gymnasium use, and a letter being sent to the Ministry of Education. Obviously, we have the same concerns and issues here. I'm not quite sure what committee would be best to refer that back to.
I believe it was Community Safety that we took that to?
Yeah.
Yep, so that would be Community Safety.
Okay, then I would recommend that we refer that back to Community Safety.
Thank you. All those in favor? Carries. Any other items on the circ list? Seeing none. We are adjourned at 10:04 p.m. on the 20th of March.
That was the update from the City Hall. Thank you for watching.